Regular meeting of the Weyburn City Council held here at the council chambers on 5:00 PM Tuesday, October 15th, 2019. I was watching, Mr. Jessau was watching an old Johnny Carson clip with Sinatra and Dean Martin coming out with the drinks. That'll be Christmas time though with this council meeting. Anyway, the approval of the minutes of the regular council meeting is the first thing we're gonna talk about, a strategic planning priorities meeting held September 23rd, 2019. Do we have a motion, please?
I'll move those minutes.
Second?
I'll second that, your worship.
Called question, all in favor? So passed. Mr. Warren, any additions to the agenda?
Your worship, there is no additions from the administration.
Council? There is no additions. There's no public hearings and notices. Tonight, we have for delegations, proclamations, petitions, we have a delegation from the Weyburn Public Library. Southeast Library, Matthew Rankin, if you would, please.
Good evening, Mayor Roy, councillors and Weyburn city staff. My name is Matthew Rankin and I'm the branch manager for Weyburn Public Library. I wanted to thank you for inviting me to speak today and talk about the programming going on at the library and give you a general update as to what we're doing. I'm very proud of the work that we've done over the last year. I want to highlight the dedication of my staff, specifically the work done by my three programmers. Renell Calpheus, our adult programmer, Coralyn Sexton, our children's programmer, and Lisa Baird, our temporary adult programmer. So I do have a presentation that's connected.
We'll just give her a minute to load the presentation here or give her the clicker. Technology. So, how's it been? Anything to report? No reports? We're good. Things are moving along here.
Well, in the meantime, I can go over the, or before I go over specific programs, I can give you an idea of how successful we've been a year to date. So, actually, perfect. We've had a total, as of this evening, 816 programs from January 1st to today. These numbers include everything from adults to teen to children, basically everything that's happened in the library so far. We've had 333 children's programs and 483 adult teen programs. And as of the last formal count, we've had 6,219 attendees to programs so far. And next slide. So this bar chart provides an overview of the program attendance for the past two years to provide a sense of how we've progressed. In addition, we need to consider services on top of this, so this is just attendees for programs. So the blue is teen and adults, and orange is children. So this year, we're set to meet and even exceed children's programming numbers and meet average levels for adult programming, so we've been doing very well the last three years. And the next slide? Thank you. So sort of give you a broad overview of what we're doing at the library. I selected 10 programs that aren't necessarily our most popular, but are sort of new stuff that we're doing and sort of important programs throughout the year. So the first one is Envision Night at the Library. This is a collaboration between Envision Counseling and Support Center and our adult programmer, Renell. The program ran after hours on February 19th to 20th, and it was basically a program that was aimed at mental health and self-esteem and empowerment for girls ages 13 to 16. I really loved this program because it was bold. It was the first time we did an overnight program. It was focused on a group that the library sometimes has trouble reaching, particularly teens, and I hope that we do more of this going forward. We also have outreach. This is a regular program. It happens every third Thursday of the month from 1:00 to 5:00. And basically, we take a mini library around to various different retirement communities such as Parkway Lodge, Tadagwa View, Hilltop Manor, and we bring book bags to individuals who can't make it out to the library and take the books from the previous month back. This is probably one of the most intensive programs we have to do every month. We wouldn't be able to do it without my full-time clerk, Serena Ring. She basically goes through everything and organizes it, and our clerks who put it together. And it's perhaps our biggest library on location program. Basically, it's us out in the community doing things for community members. We also have the summer reading program. I kind of cheated a little bit with this program because it's actually an umbrella term for a bunch of programs we do during the summer, and it's organized under the Toronto Dominion Reading Program. We had around 300 kids register this year for the programs and for a reading challenge. This was probably our most successful year, and we implemented about five programs per month, as alongside special programs such as Science Go and Danny Kazam. We also had Mixology, which is usually a popular program. It's basically in the spring and the fall, so it's basically making drinks and making food. This year, we had a men's mixology night in which we were able to get around 13 registrations, and it's an example of a program that basically reaches out to a group much like teens that we have trouble sometimes getting into the library. We have Baby and Me and Music and Play, and these are regular morning activity programs aimed at parents with small children presently alternating on Thursday mornings. So basically, with our Storytime program, this is the bulk of our children's programming. It's really important for promoting early childhood literacy and acting as a social center for the parents who come in. We also had pumpkin carving, which is pretty self-explanatory. We have this on the 28th this year of October. Basically, families come in to carve pumpkins and they get to keep what they carve. We also had Teen Movie Night, which was the movie Alpha. This was a relatively recent program. This happened in September, and it was the initiative of our temporary adult programmer, Lisa Baird. Basically, it's like a book club for teens, but instead of a book, it's a self-contained program where they just watched a movie, Alpha, and then discussed the themes afterwards. So the idea was to promote critical thinking by going through something. We also had Death Cafe. So this is a national organization that is basically trying to promote a more open discussion about death and basically not having an agenda, just having people come in and talk about what's going on in their lives, how they feel about death, and it was a way that we can use the library space to sort of bring the community together and sort of have a tough discussion, but something that's open to everyone. We also had Tag Nerf War at the youth center. So this is another collaboration between our adult programmer and the youth center in town. Basically, I really like this program because it got a lot of teens involved with the program through the library. And then finally, I have Cookies, Carols and Cards, which is sort of an institution at the library. It happens in December. And basically, it's a massive program where we have a downstairs music festival, basically. Cookies are in, sorry, there's a, what do you call it? A sort of shared cookie and treat setup downstairs as well as card stations upstairs. So these programs by no means encompass all the programming that we do at the library, but it's sort of a slice of what we're doing and what we're trying to do going forward. We also have several services at the library, such as the 3D printer, free Wi-Fi, the Seed Library, seasonal lamps, PlayStation 4 virtual reality system, and projector and screen lending. And not to mention, we are trying to go to more community events such as the Summer Open Air Market, Culture Days, the July Parade, and other events. And I also want to emphasize that we are very thankful for the support that the city provides to us, and going forward, I want to make sure that the partnerships we have in the community and with council are strengthened in that you guys know what we're doing because it keeps us accountable, and also that it promotes us as well. So thank you very much for letting me speak.
You're welcome. Any questions?
Matthew, first of all, I thank you very much for what you and your team are doing over there. This is very impressive. So how do you come up with those 10 different events that you do? Is it decided at the board level, or what happens?
So we're a city branch, so we have two programmers that are on normally, and basically, it's a discussion between them and me. I approve everything that we're doing going forward, but we'll have like, they'll see something that we're, that's happening at Estevan or one of the smaller libraries and something we might want to do on a larger scale. You know, we have members of the city. I've been in conversations with about programs that we can do. We have members of the community. We have people who just want to use the space for like financial literacy session. So basically, it's a bunch of different places that it comes from, and just stuff that we've noticed of the libraries doing, like even outside of Saskatchewan, and just bringing it in, so.
Matthew, would you also work with the schools at all?
Yeah, yeah. Coralyn in particular is the main contact on that. As I was mentioning before, there are services that are sort of in addition to the numbers we have for programming. So she does like school visits, or we have bring students in to basically show them the library, show them what we do, so.
Very impressive. Thank you.
Thank you.
Any other questions, council? Seeing none, thank you. We appreciate, and we appreciate all the hard work that the library does for our community, and it's well utilized throughout our community. We appreciate that.
May I mention just one more thing? This week, we also have our book sale going on from Thursday to Saturday, so if you are able to come, that'd be great. It's downstairs in the Ally Griffin and the program room.
How many years has this book sale been going, Diane?
It was going before I started, and I started in 1990.
I finally got that out of you. Thanks very much.
Thank you.
Thank you. Again, we really appreciate all the hard work that you and your committees do for the library, and the library is a huge benefit for within our city here. Board and standing committees, please commission.
The regular meeting of the Weyburn Police Commission is held in the administration boardroom at 3:30 Wednesday, September 18th. First item on the agenda was the mayor's report for July and August. In July 2019, in comparison to July 2018, the crimes against persons had increased by one, crimes against property had decreased by 18, total calls for service had decreased by 228 from 748 in 2018 to 528 in 2019, and alarm calls decreased by nine. In August 2019, in comparison to August 2018, crimes against persons had decreased by 10, crimes against property has decreased by 19, total calls for service had decreased by 149 from 656 in 2018 to 507 in 2019, and alarm calls increased by 18. So that was roughly a 25% decrease in calls for service, which is good. The chief gave a brief up, in his verbal report, gave a brief update of some general items. Weyburn Humane Society Chief Pritchard presented the July and August Weyburn Humane Society Stats Report, and the board took this as information. Chief Pritchard presented the August Bylaw Enforcement and CSO Activity Report, and the board also took this as information. The bylaw enforcement officer, Felner, is starting to pull back on bylaw enforcement due to the CSO taking some of this work. Chief Pritchard provided a report on the Weyburn Police Service Community Perception Phone Survey performed by the University of Regina. Their survey included contacting 251 Weyburn residents, and the findings were that the Weyburn Police Service matches or exceeds national and provincial benchmarks. The board discussed using some of this information in their future strategic plan. Roles and responsibility of Board Chief and City Administration. Chief Pritchard provided the board with a document suggesting that the board retain Mitch Holash or another individual to conduct board training, as well as city hall staff training on understanding the roles and responsibilities of the board, the chief, and the city. Chief Pritchard advised that this is for information only. Mayor Roy advised the dates are November 26th in Regina. Ron McCormick, Don Eman, and Mayor stated that they can attend this. This is police board training. There is also a session in Saskatoon for November 20th. City clerk advised that the next regular police commission meeting falls on the next regular council meeting date, so the meeting was put to October 22nd, 2019 at 4:00 PM. The board then moved into in-camera items. One of the items in in-camera was a motion that was made by Council Richards and seconded by Barclay Charlton that a hiring committee be struck up to develop a process and bring back updates and recommendations on the hiring of a new police chief, and those appointees include Councillor Van Betchu, Rob Steffensen, Ron McCormick, and the City of Weyburn Human Resources Manager Brittany Hutton. The meeting was adjourned.
Questions? Seeing none, mark this as filed, accepted and filed. Moving forward to consent and agenda, we have the water treatment plant, fire department report, and the cash activity report. We have a motion to you.
Yes, I have a motion, your worship, that the following items on the consent agenda be approved. That's the water treatment plant for September, fire department report for September also, and cash activities report for August.
Do you have a second?
I'll second that, your worship.
Any questions? Seeing none, called question, all in favor? unanimously approved. Motions, counts payable? Do you have a motion, please?
I think I have that one also, your worship. I would like to move that the purchases in the amount of $2,290,918.69 from September 20th to October 10th, 2019 be passed for payment. The purchase included a quick pay totaling of $209,957.18. Accounts payable totaling $1,616,691.69, and direct withdrawals totaling $455,838.24, and debit card transactions totaling $8,431.58.
I'll second that, your worship. Called question? Laura, one question? Are we, we are still on budget online? We're not over budget on all this stuff?
No, we're just fine.
We're good. Just so that we always know that we're not, or the people know that we are still managing, our staff still managing correctly, and we are still on budget on what we had said before. Called question, all in favor? Carried unanimously. Thank you. Next motion, library board appointment, Vic Weeb? Mr. Matthew, or who's gonna do?
If I could do that.
Mr. Wheeler?
Yeah, the Weyburn Public Library boards have been busy over the past few months, trying to find a new candidate for the board, and at this time, I'd like to make a motion that Vic Weeb be appointed to the Weyburn Library Board for the remainder of 2019.
Do you have a second?
I'll second that, your worship.
Did you want to speak to that? No? Okay. All in favor? Carried unanimously. Our next one, our fleet storage design team recommendations. Now, Mr. Crowe, our facilities, facilities manager, if you would, sir.
Thank you, your worship. So some background, during the July 26th, 2019 Strategic Planning and Priorities Council meeting, a recommendation was given to move ahead with the completion of our request for proposal to secure building design, to secure building design engineering services for the proposed fleet storage building. The proposed fleet storage building will replace the existing roundhouse building, and it is to be constructed in a manner that will both meet our current needs and our future needs as well. So a request for proposal was developed and released to the industry on August 2nd and was open until August 27th. The RFP process was managed by Midgard Project Management and was listed on SASC tenders in the City of Weyburn website. The RFP process saw a total of 10 proposals submitted with one being removed from competition as it was not received during the specified submittal timelines. The nine qualifying proposals were thoroughly reviewed by city administration and evaluated through the use of a pre-established scoring system, taking into consideration all aspects of the proposed services, including experience, team, methodology, value add, and the total cost. The completion of the evaluation process saw scoring that ranged from 61.75 to 90.94 points, and proposed fees ranging from $179,146 to $408,819. As per the RFP outline, the selected proponent is to have all design documents completed by the end of December 2019, which will allow for the construction tender to be initiated in 2020 if city council chooses to move forward with the construction of the project. In the event construction does not move forward in 2020, all design documents will remain relevant for future construction considerations. The 2019 budget includes $1.25 million allocated towards consultation services, design, and early construction of the proposed facility. Cost estimated, cost estimates determined that $320,000 of the 2019 budget amount would be allocated for the procurement of the design team. Below is a breakdown of how the nine proponents scored through the evaluation process. You can see that there's quite the spread from number one to number nine with a large difference in fees for the same end results. So following the thorough evaluation process, an in-person interview, and the completion of multiple reference inquiries, it's recommended that McGinn Engineering be contracted to complete the design of the proposed fleet storage facility in the amount of $199,950 excluding associated taxes. Though McGinn did not provide the lowest, the lowest total cost, their scoring and other aspects were far higher than all the other proposals. If the recommendation to contract McGinn Engineering is accepted, the procurement of the building design portion of the fleet storage facility project will be $120,050 below the initial cost estimate.
Andrew, where is McGinn out of?
They're out of Regina.
Because I'd never heard of, heard of them before, so.
Yeah, they've been in the industry for quite a few years.
Okay, but through all the years, I've never visited one there. So, any other questions? Go ahead.
Yes, Andrew, I'm not familiar with this grading system that you have, and that's, that's fine, but that's how they can supply services? Is that basically what it is?
Yeah, so basically, with the RFP process, each team puts together a package, or each company puts together a package explaining the team that they'll allocate and the resources that they'll allocate to our process, and then the proposal walks through their methodology of how they get from now to the finished product, and just the breakdown in services, the extra ideas that they might be able to provide that the other proponents may not bring to the table, and then they also compare other projects within the same price range as the proposed in front of them.
I thought we had a template for the building design already. Do we have that?
We have an early template that the design team will be building off of. It's not construction-ready by any means, but it's a nice start to it, so they're able to.
Basically, a preliminary plan.
Yeah, yeah, we have a preliminary plan done that they'll hopefully be able to streamline for us and make more efficient and hopefully more cost-effective.
Okay, thank you.
Other questions? No? Go ahead, Mr. Wheeler.
Worship, I'd like to make the motion that the bid of McGinn Engineering from Regina, Saskatchewan, to complete the design of the proposed fleet storage facility in the amount of $199,950 excluding taxes be accepted.
Second?
I'll second that, your worship.
Any further discussion? Seeing none, called question, all in favor? Carried unanimously.
Thank you.
Don't run away, because aren't you the next one up there again, or is this Natter? Salt Shack? Natter?
The City of Weyburn Public Works requires an installation of either a complete storage unit or a partial installation of storage superstructure utilizing an existing wooden foundation for housing salt. On September 27th, 2019, salt storage facility request for proposal was posted on SASC tenders subsequently to the city website. The request for proposal was prepared to allow bidders to provide quotation for the project according to the following criteria: supply, ship, and complete installation of salt storage structure according to the specification, option to remove or utilize existing foundation. Seven quotations, or seven submissions for responses for the request for proposal was received by the city from seven vendors with a total of nine proposals, as stated in the attached table. Consideration include uncertainties about support structure, whether adequate site preparation has been performed previously, and the likelihood of needing to remove and replace existing wooden supports. Our recommendation, it is recommended that the 2019 salt storage facility contract be awarded to Harbert Construction Limited out of Musman, Saskatchewan, for a total of $73,371, which include a replacement for the existing wooden support structure.
Your worship, I'll make a motion that Harbert Construction Limited, Muscho, Saskatchewan, to supply and install a salt storage structure at the City Works yard in the amount of $73,371 be accepted.
That was Musman, right? Right. Thought you said Muscho.
I'll second that, your worship.
Any discussion?
I got a question again, to Natter. This foundation that we bid on or didn't bid on, is it done that we could have, or how did that work with the other people bidding, that they may be bid on it with using an older structure, and this one we're accepting is a new, they're taking the floor out, or the wood foundation out, I understand. Is that correct? Is it done?
We don't have any kind of structural drawing for the existing building foundation, so we don't, we can't assist it like, you know, without having drawing for the existing foundation. This is basically it.
Okay, so the, the way this was bid upon then, is it fair to everybody?
It's fair for everybody because like, you know, the option was given to them to bid or to add. So as an example, there is two bidders there who is providing two proposal, one with and one without.
Okay, okay, thank you.
Michael?
Natter, maybe this isn't a fair question. You were here at the time. How old was the building that were replaced? 15 years?
That's.
I remember being here when we, when we passed to do it. Is it beyond 15?
Almost 20 years, 15 to 20, yeah.
That's, yeah, that lasted pretty good, because we didn't think it would last that long at the time, I remember that. So if we can get 20 years plus out of this, then we're still doing good. Really?
Yeah, like, you know, get a tornado here.
Yeah, good, thanks.
Called a question, all in favor? Carried unanimously. Moving forward, introduction of bylaws, the cemetery bylaw amendment. Mr. Warren?
Thank you, your worship. A report provided by Parks Coordinator Curtis Block touched base on wanting to amend bylaw 2017 3355, which is our current rate bylaw for the cemetery. So it includes cemetery, so it includes some information to counsel on background about cost recovery. So on average, we do about thirty, thirty-three percent cost recovery within the cemetery, and the plan within these additional rates will be continued with that thirty-three or thirty percent recovery rate as we go forward. So what Curtis provided to counsel on the second page under B, current fees, talks about our current fee structure, on average, we're doing about a twenty-five to thirty-dollar range during that last fee increase. He also provides information on comparisons, so he compares our rates to Estevan, Swift Current, to Yorke and to Prince Albert, and then they also did Green Acres, who is a provincially-owned cemetery outside city limits of Weyburn. So we go through the rates, Weyburn rates are quite comparable to what they do in Estevan, but not the same as what they do in Swift Current, Yorkton, Prince Albert, but the feeling is that the expectation is to stay within that thirty percent recovery for that, so no need to have big jumps in the rates as we move forward. So going into the proposed rates, Curtis has done multiple rates, and these would be from 2020, so January 1st, until December 31st of 2022. Once again, average increases you're looking at between ten dollars to thirty dollars per year as you go through, there's something that stays stack after the very first year of changing. The whole, the whole goal once again is not to have a huge jump in fees, but to have fees that fit within our current structure for rate recovery for the cemetery.
I'm just looking there, what's cremation? I, I forgot, I saw it in, pardon me? Three hundred. Okay, because then the reason being is that cremations I know are, they said that it's almost three to one out there, it's huge amount of things on that.
Mr. Michael, go ahead.
I have a motion, your worship, in fact, I have a few of them. A motion that the bylaw, bylaw 2019-3402, to amend bylaw 2005-3061, a bylaw respecting the operation of Hillcrest Cemetery be read a first time.
I'll second that, your worship.
Discussion? Seeing none, call the question, all in favor? Carried unanimously.
Next motion I have, your worship, sorry, somebody was.
Go ahead, nope.
Motion that bylaw number 2019-3402, to amend bylaw 2005-3061, a bylaw respecting the operation of Hillcrest Cemetery be read a second time.
I'll second that, your worship.
Call the question, all in favor? Carried unanimously. Moving forward.
Make a motion, your worship, that bylaw number 2019-3402, to amend bylaw 2005-3061, a bylaw respecting the operation of Hillcrest Cemetery be given three readings at this meeting.
Call the question, all in favor?
Oh, good. I'll second that, your worship.
All in favor? Jumping ahead, sorry, so now that we've got the motion that we can, we can go ahead and do a third reading, everybody's unanimous on that, we'll move forward with the third reading.
Thank you, worship. Make a motion that bylaw 2019-3402, to amend bylaw 2005-3061, a bylaw respecting the operation of Hillcrest Cemetery be read a third time and passed.
I'll second that, your worship.
Call the question, all in favor? Carried unanimously. Very good, passed. No unfinished business, new business, home occupation, amend if you will, please.
An application has been received from Wyatt Velque to operate a car detailing business at 227 Seventeenth Street Northeast. The business will operate Saturdays and Sundays from 8:00 AM to 5:00 PM with appointment only. This would be considered controversial use as the occupation involves clients being directed to the home throughout the day. Parking will be available in the driveway for clients, as there will only be one client per appointment. Staff recommends that council approve a home occupation at 227 Seventeenth Street with the following conditions: that no person other than a resident of the dwelling unit shall be engaged in the home occupation as an employee or volunteer; no advertisement carrying out the address of the dwelling in which the home occupation occurs may be placed in any media; the face of any home business sign on-site shall not exceed point zero nine two square meters and shall be placed within the inside half of the front yard setback; home occupations are subject to periodic review to ensure compliance; no welding is permitted as any home occupation; the owner's driveway shall be used for off-street parking for the clients, and a city Weyburn business license shall be obtained prior to operation.
Your worship?
I'd like to make a motion that the home occupation application from Wyatt Velque to operate a car detailing business from her residence at 227 Seventeenth Street, Lot Floor, Block 5, Plan 74R05478, zoned as R1, be approved with the following conditions: no person other than a resident of the dwelling unit shall be engaged in the home occupation as an employee or volunteer; no advertisement carrying the address of the dwelling in which the home occupation occurs may be placed in any media; the face of any biz, any home business sign on-site must not exceed point zero nine two square meters, ad must be placed within the inside half of the front yard setback; home occupations are subject to periodic review to ensure compliance; no welding is permitted for any home occupation; owner's driveway shall be used for off-street parking of clients, and city Weyburn business license shall be obtained prior to the operation of home occupation.
You have second?
Your worship, I'll second that motion.
Discussion? Seeing none, call the question, all in favor? Carried unanimously. Moving forward, discretionary use applications, shipping container.
Sorry, your worship, I have interest in this one.
Good.
I don't know, am I, if I'm on the oil and show board, I'm okay? Different reasons, please.
Moving forward, go ahead.
We have received a discretionary use development permit application from the Oil and Gas Show to get approval for placement of a shipping container to be used for long-term storage on the exhibition grounds. The proposal is to place a shipping container sized forty feet by eight feet just north of the McFadden Building and utilize it for storage. The site is currently zoned exhibition park, and placement of a storage container is discretionary use. As a discretionary use, we're required to send out neighborhood notice to all residents within seventy-five meter radius of the proposed development. However, due to the location of the proposed placement being a hundred and sixty-eight meters from First Avenue, a hundred and forty meters from Fifth Street Northwest, and a hundred and ninety meters from Cotto Avenue West, there were no neighbors within a seventy-five meter radius to be negatively affected. In considering the request for the proposed placement in not direct view of existing residential properties and ensuring it meets the requirements of shipping and cargo containers, staff recommends that council approve the placement of the shipping container for storage as proposed, subject to the following conditions: products stored must be directly related to the primary commercial use; shipping containers are not to be leased or used by an outside party other than the property owner; shipping containers are prohibited for storage of junk, trash, or other forms of refuse, hazardous substance, or perishable items; shipping containers shall be kept locked to prevent unauthorized access; shipping containers shall be placed on a hard-packed level surface, and any bottom drainage hole shall be secured against the environment and/or rodents; shipping containers are prohibited from being plumbed or electrified; shipping containers shall be painted and maintained to be aesthetically pleasing; any outdoor storage shall conform to Section 5.4 of the zoning bylaw; any areas not occupied as buildings, parking, loading, or storage shall be landscaped in accordance with Section 15.1.2 of the zoning bylaw, and all property including the land, building, structure, and outdoors, outdoor storage shall be maintained with the minimum standards as set out in the City of Weyburn Property Maintenance Abatement Bylaw 2014-3021.
Mr. Richard?
Thanks, worship, I'd like to make a motion that discretionary use development permit application from the Saskatchewan Oil and Gas Show for placement of a shipping container on the exhibition grounds for the purpose of storage be approved with the following conditions: products must be directly, stored must be directly related to the primary commercial use; shipping containers are not to be leased or used by any outside party other than the property owner; shipping containers are prohibited for the storage of junk, trash, or other forms of refuse, hazardous substance, or perishable items; shipping containers shall be kept locked to prevent unauthorized access; shipping containers be placed on hard-packed level surface, and any bottom drainage hole shall be secured against the environment and/or rodents; shipping containers are prohibited from being plumbed or electrified; shipping containers shall be painted and maintained to be aesthetically pleasing; any outdoor storage on-site, Section 5.4 of the zoning bylaw shall be complied with; storage shall be completely screened by a solid wall or fence of at least one point eight three meters high, and the storage area shall be maintained as to reduce the adverse visual effects of the storage and to enhance public health and safety by preventing the contamination of the urban environment; areas not occupied by the buildings, parking, loading, or storage shall be landscaped in accordance with subsection 15.1.2 of the zoning bylaw, and all property including land, building, structures, and outdoor storage shall be maintained with the minimum standards as set out by the City of Weyburn Property Maintenance Bylaw 2004-3021.
I'll second that, your worship. Did you want to repeat that, just before we, one second? Okay, so I just wanted, yeah, okay.
Just to comment on it, the oil show has been very cooperative with the Ag Society, Agriculture Society on working this out, and the Agriculture Society is very willing to accommodate the oil show for, for this need of the, the storage unit.
Yes. Call the question, all in favor? Carried unanimously. Thank you. As we're moving forward, and we, Mr. Chels is coming back in here, we're moving forward to the, the hospital levy, and I guess this is, Laura, you are up, if you wish to speak to it?
Sure, so in 2012, council passed a motion that we were committed to raise six million dollars for the new hospital, and a hundred and forty dollar levy was implemented on all residential dwellings for a period of ten years. At the end of 2019, our balance in the levy account is going to be just over five point five million, that includes interest of two hundred and, two hundred and forty-six thousand. So if the same levy of a hundred and forty dollars is collected next year, our balance will be over six million. So it's recommended that we reduce the levy to forty dollars per resident, and that'll put us just under six million, and then any additional interest that we raise in the next year to two years, then that will put us up to the six million, and we'll have that money sitting waiting for the hospital foundation.
Do you have a motion, please? Or do, does, do you not?
Actually, your worship, this would just be for your information, we don't need a motion tonight, because it's actually under the mill rates bylaw, so when the mill rates bylaw is drafted for 2020, our Director of Finance would include whatever your direction would be tonight, so you could give a direction and motion to your Director of Finance to include this in her bylaw, however, we can't actually set that levy until the mill rates bylaw is set.
But we need, but at least we give a motion.
But you could give her a direction to put it, you know, to include it in her bylaw.
Do you have one? Mr. Michael?
Yes, your worship, I concur with what Danette has said, that we add that in our, our bylaw, Laura, for 2020. If I can make a comment, maybe I'll get a second or first now, a comment.
I'll second that, your worship.
The comment I'd like to make, your worship, is, is I, I thank the citizens of this community for over the last few years have made their commitment to the hospital, and this is going to sound like a broken record, but we still don't know when and where it's going to go. That's, that's the sad part of reality, however, again, the community has got together and done their due diligence, and I thank them again for that, and we also, this is a ten-year plan, and we reached it prior, before that, and we said we'd honor that commitment, and this is a good step going forward. So thank you, everyone, for contributing to our soon-to-be hospital coming very soon, we hope.
Well spoken. Comments?
Yeah, I, I would just like to feed back to the citizens, I think you and I, Dick, were here when we passed that, and there was great discussion at this, in chambers about putting what we felt was a very high burden of a large tax increase, and that's what it was, it was the levy, onto our citizens, with limited amount of feedback that was negative, I think the citizens deserve the recognition of making this possible for our city to be progressive and look ahead of, of the facility that will come, it'll, it'll get here. We, we always get impatient about these things, but it, it, we know we're going to get it sooner or later, so thank you again to the citizens of the, of Weyburn for putting this together and making this community what it is. We're, we're not the number one city to live in in Western Canada on the Prairies for no, a lot of good reasons to bring that forth, and this is one of them.
No further comments? Call the question, that, all in favor? There you have your direction, and we appreciate that greatly. There's no inquiries and announcements at this time, anybody for inquiries and announcements? Mr. Van Betje?
I'd just like to remind everybody that the Weyburn Communathon is being carried next Friday, the 25th, and it's moving back to the Royal Canadian Legion, and this event supports eleven community members, so I think it's very important that we all get out and support it, and I challenge each councillor here to get down there and donate at least fifty dollars to the, towards the cause and get things started off in the boom. Thank you.
Councillor Van Betje, if I may ask, if I win fifty dollars off councillor Michael on another sports bet, can I use that fifty dollars?
Yeah, because that'll make a hundred.
Perfect, thank you.
Your worship, I have to get part of this now, too, at, we had this little discussion at supper, but I thought councillor Van Betje was paying it all.
Two, and now I, I'm totally, what is that multiple pythons say, on a completely different subject there, Mr. Hoffer, I'm going to kind of call you forward just for a second to, because you are more familiar with this, on Saturday, we are going to have a tree planting, there's going to be a tree planting by the TD Bank, and if you could just even give a little brief thing, just hit the button, sorry for, on the last second asking you this, but.
Oh, it's all good, so we partnered up, partnered up with the TD Bank, and we're going to be planting a hundred and fifty trees in the Tadagua Trail Urban Conservation Area, and that is going to be happening this Saturday, it's going to begin at nine o'clock, nine AM in the morning, and it's going to be just off of Queen Street, just north of Highway 13, so you'll be able to meet us all there, all the holes are going to be pre-jug, and if you'd like to register, don't be afraid to go on our website and take a look at weyburn.ca.
Both Mr. Michael and I will be there, in our PPE, hard hats, vest.
Toe nail hardener on him, for safety.
For safety on that, thank you. Our school is coming along, and, and I'm not, the school is coming along, the rec center is being built, we're seeing the roof on it, getting many great comments from citizens as to the progress, we will have a progress report coming along in future council, Mr. Warren?
Yeah, Director Crowe will be providing you guys an update in upcoming council meeting on the progress of how the, the project's going, and it is going quite well, the weather until this rain, we've had the last little bit has helped until now with the rain, but it's just like farmers, it's not the greatest right now, but that's the way it goes, but everything's going well, and he'll provide a full update of, of the project for, for council and for the public.
And although it's not ours, the school isn't ours, the city are there, it is, you can see the tindle stone then being put on the front of it, and it's looking there, it's going to be a very, very nice, complex on completion, and a lot of, we're getting lots of positive feedback for it, and people are looking forward to, to this. Any other questions? The other one was that I wanted to bring, that we are, although it's kind of after our next council meeting, but we are going to be doing, there's going to be an open to public traffic safety on that?
Yeah, so we just got announced actually today, we're working on some, some press releases, and that's working on that for us right now, is, is for the regional traffic study, they're talking about on October 29th from four until seven o'clock at upstairs of the Curling Rink, so we're just waiting for information from the government, because I think they want to talk about the twinning of, of the highway as well, with some information there, so once we have more information, our social media page on our city website will have information on there, let the public know, we'll have stuff out to our local media as well to promote that event, because we want as many people out to come and put some information towards both those projects to help the province and to help us as a city.
Right, and that'll be October 29th, four to seven, in the upstairs of the Curling Rink, open to all the public, anybody that wants to have input, put their input in as to the whole regional traffic area, both in the city and around the city, at the Curling Rink. Twenty ninth, twenty ninth. We are, I will be up in Regina earlier that day, as there will be, long service medal is also being handed out to some of our people within the emergency services, and I think, I believe, one for sure I know that's going to be receiving is Bert Coff at the Ambience as a twenty-year service, long service medal. as a twenty-year service, long service medal on that day. With that being said, any other comments? Announcements? There's no notice of motions, I shall therefore call this meeting adjourned.